Good evening, I call this meeting the Cartersville City Council's order for please stand for our invocation and our pledge.
If you'll bow your heads. Our dear heavenly Father, we ask your blessings on all the families that are represented here tonight, and we ask your guidance with this council to do the very best we can. All this we ask in the holy and precious name. Amen.
And now we've got members of the Cartersville Little League baseball team that are going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. Make a pledge. You ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hi, all gentlemen. Let's have everybody in the room, please.
Carrie Hod, Ward 1. Jay Stepp, Ward 2. Louis Hansmeyer, Ward 3.
Here.
Lindsey McDaniel, Ward 4.
Here.
Diane Tate, Ward 5.
Here.
Lori Pruitt, Ward 6.
Thank you very much. I know Carrie and Lori are under the weather. Jay Stepp just had something come up as well. Just for those who may be trivially interested at home, it does take four visits, excuse me, it takes four votes for something to pass, and so in that instance, I'll be voting this evening, and that will count as the fourth vote. We do have the first order of business, which is approving our council meeting minutes from our September 3 meeting, and council, you've had these well in advance of this evening, and had an opportunity to review them. If there are any edits or corrections, now would be the time to note those, and if not, a motion to approve would be in order.
Mayor, upon reviewing the minutes from the last meeting, I don't see any additions or corrections, make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion in the second, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and I say aye as well, and those are approved. Now technically, I didn't add this to the agenda, so I need a motion to add this proclamation to the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. Greg, please lead us off with this.
Yes, sir Mayor, this is Mayor and Council. This is one of the highlights of my job, that we get to recognize some of our fine programs. Cartersville Little League, the Ten Under All-Stars, they played in two tournaments, district tournament in Gilmore County, and then won that tournament, and then went on to qualify, then went to Savannah, won that tournament, were undefeated the whole season. And they have just followed a long line of successful Cartersville Little League teams. In fact, this team is, the Tens and Twelves, the last five out of the six years have came home with the state championship, and it is my pleasure to recommend and congratulate these young men for their success.
Thank you, Greg. I have a proclamation that I'm going to read, and then I'll come down and present it to the team. It says, "Whereas the Cartersville Little League's All-Star Team won the Georgia Parks and Recreation Association's fifth district, and the Georgia Parks and Recreation Association's Ten Under Baseball Championships, the Purple Hurricanes, representing Cartersville Parks and Recreation Department, won their fourth district tournament, their four district tournament games played in Gilmore County, and then qualified them for the state that was held in Savannah, and then in the state tournament, the Hurricanes went undefeated in their four tournament games, and won the championship game by a score of 14 to nothing." That was unkind, y'all didn't give anybody a chance. Whereas this 2015 win made it back to back to back, and Greg mentioned a few more backs on there, GRPA State Championships for the Cartersville Little League, and whereas the players on this winning team consisted of Tripp Bradley, Drake Carver, A.J. Christina, Bryce Craig, Paul Gamble, Avery Higgins, Hunter Kelly, Nick Kennedy, Will Litton, Thomas Norris, Jakian Porter, and Isaac Siegler, and whereas coaches J.J. Norris, Jeremy Carver, Stan Bradley, and Bill Kelly are to be commended for giving unselfishly of their time and effort in the development of the baseball talents of this winning team. Now therefore, as Mayor of the City of Cartersville, I, Matthew J. Santini, use this means to encourage all residents to acknowledge the glorious season and state championship win of the Cartersville Little League's All-Star Ten Under Purple Hurricanes baseball team. Come on forward, guys. Teach yourself to call Rip and Rip. Turn around and face everybody right there. I'm just going to get the picture taken right here. Hold on. Kyle, one. Here we go. That truck, so he gets the... We're going to get the picture. We'll take a picture like this. Everybody on the air, everybody here's live.
Coach, coach. Congratulations. Nice looking bunch.
Mayor and Council, I just wanted to thank the City of Cartersville for their support of Cartersville Little League. We are an entity that, you know, we work hand in hand with City Parks and Recreation. We couldn't have done it without the support all year that Greg has provided for us, and then also to have Rip come down there and support us while we're down in Savannah. It means a lot, and we're glad that we could represent the city in the manner that we did. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you. Now, there's a bonus on top of this, not monetary, don't get excited or anything like that. By the way, parents, I know it takes a tremendous amount of time and effort and schedule juggling to, and a financial commitment to have your kids be a part of this, and so I commend y'all for that as well. It's a lot more fun when they win, I know that. The bonus is, we've got a lot of other business to do tonight, and I know as badly as y'all want to sit here and watch us do it, if you feel like you might have somewhere else to be tonight, you are more than welcome to leave. Okay? So, that being said, I'm going to let count to maybe about 30 or so before we do anything else. Y'all, good night. I was going to thank them for bringing that trophy to me, that I put in my office proudly, but it looks like it's going over there. Yeah, go figure. It is, it's bigger than they are. All right, let's get on with the work at hand this evening. We do have a public, a series of public hearings, first readings tonight. First one is AZ 15-04, and Mr. Manino, if you'll get us started with that.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you had mentioned, these are public hearings, and this is an annexation and a zoning request. This request is not at 918 Jones Mill Road, approximately a half acre lot. The applicant is looking to annex into the city. Reasoning being, in their application, was the desire to be in the city school system. As with all of our cases on the agenda today, they all have been posted and advertised. There appears to be no conflicts of interest, and all the cases were evaluated based on the adopted standards for exercise of zoning. With that, the planning commission heard the request and did recommend the request for approval.
Okay. Any questions for Randy at this point? Thank you, sir. I'll open up a public hearing relative to the annexation portion of 15-04. Anybody wish to step forward and speak for or against, may do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing relative to the annexation portion of AZ 15-04. I'll now open up a public hearing for the zoning portion of AZ 15-04. And once again, ask anybody to step forward, should they choose to speak in either manner on this. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing relative to the zoning portion of AZ 15-04. Council will take this up for final consideration at our first meeting in October. Next item is AZ 15-05.
Thanks again, Mayor and Council. Like the previous cases, this is an annexation and a zoning request, and for the same reasoning, this property, or the properties at 19 and 27 Johnson Lane, the applicant's desire to be in the city school system. The planning commission did hear this request and did recommend it for approval.
Okay, questions for Mr. Manino on this item? Thank you, sir. And again, I'll open up a public hearing relative to the annexation portion of AZ 15-05. Anybody wishing to step forward and speak for or against, may do so at this time. And seeing none, I will close the public hearing for the annexation portion, and at the same time, open up a public hearing for the zoning portion of AZ 15-05. And again, anybody who wishes to speak on this item may step forward now. And seeing none, I will close the zoning hearing relative to AZ 15-05. We'll take this up for final consideration at our first meeting in October. The next item is Z 15-05.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. This is just a zoning request. This is located at 1009 North Tennessee Street. The applicant is Randy Burey. The property is currently zoned professional services, office type zoning. The western portion of the property, which is part of the same tract, is zoned OC. The applicant's desires to have the entire tract with the same commercial zoning category on that. With that, the planning commission did hear this request, and they do recommend it for approval.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Manino on this item?
Randy, just one question, please. Going from PS to OC, was there a mention about additional buffers?
Yes, there is additional buffer required in the OC zoning, which they have requested, and the applicant is aware of that, and that does provide, since there is residential to the rear and around the property, so it'll actually provide for more buffer for those properties.
So there's three R-15s.
Correct. This juts back into the R-15 with this particular commercial zoning, the PS and the OC will actually protect it more with larger buffers.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Randy, and I'll open up the public hearing relative to case Z 15-05. Anybody wishing to step forward, speak for or against, may do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing on Z 15-05, and Council, again, we will take this up for final consideration at our first meeting in October. Mr. Anderson, you have the next item, please.
Yes, sir Mayor and Council. This is an application by the Parks and Recreation Department for a festival area at Dillinger Park. This is in conjunction with Wolf Sports, which will be hosting their 16th Annual Dog Disc Championship at Dillinger Park. Melissa Heater, who puts on this event, she, as last year, she wants to host a cookout for her, the participants of the program and the judges, and part of the zone festival requires that we have a marked off area, which will be the festival area. There will be two off-duty Carterville Police Department officers on duty. Johnny Mitchell's Smokehouse will be catering the event and pouring alcohol. They will be furnished with certificate of liability insurance and a special permit by the state. I recommend approval of this resolution and application.
Okay, questions for Greg on this item?
Mayor, just one. Greg, how many people do we have on the list to have gone through certification like Johnny Mitchell has, approximately?
Johnny Mitchell's the only one that's ever done it for the Parks and Rec Department. Our, well, this is the only event that we've ever had there, and they've done both of them.
So we've only had two events at Dillinger Park?
At Dillinger Park.
And it's both been for Melissa Heater for this?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? If not, a motion is in order.
Motion to approve the resolution, and Mayor will sign it.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. What do we got next? Dan, you've got this one, please.
Yes, Mayor, this is redemption of the bonds for the joint development authority. Back in 2005, we issued some bonds for the industrial park purchase, and the first call date is November 2015. The funds to pay off those bonds were anticipated to come from the SPOLOST account, the 2014 SPOLOST. They're not coming in as timely as we anticipated, but Park County is stepping up to prepay, help us prepay those bonds to meet the November 1 call date. It'll save about $4 million overall on the bond interest payments, and I recommend approval to enter this agreement where Park County will prepay those, and then we'll still get our tax collections starting about April 2016 for city purposes.
Thank you, Dan. Any questions?
Just to thank you to the county.
Absolutely. And a good move on the JDA to save everybody $4 million, that's not too bad either. Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion carries unanimously. Bob, you've got the next item, please. Deed of dedication.
Good evening, everyone. As everybody knows, we are getting a new McDonald's on Grassdale Road, and as part of that development, they were required to make some minor water main improvements, relocations, that type of thing, and this is just essentially a project cleanup where they are conveying ownership of those constructed mains to us and the associated warranty that goes with that, would recommend your approval.
Okay, thank you. Pretty straightforward. Any questions or comments? If not, a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Bob. Fire Marshal Hathaway, you're next.
Honorable Mayor and Council, I'm here to respectfully request approval for our annual site med physicals for the fire department, so we can stay in compliance with NFPA 1582 and OSHA 1910.156. These physicals provide the annual required physical clearance to meet our wellness for the personnel. I'm chewing on my words here, sorry.
All right.
It provides for two-phase physical testing, the first being a blood draw, and the second being a visit with a doctor. We have a doctor that actually works hand in hand with the fire department and with human resources in case we have any issues that arise. The cost for these should be about $19,170, which is a $167 increase from last year. After these base physicals are done, if there's any of these certain blood markers that show up, there may need to be some additional testing. Well, we have additional testing for the hazardous materials response team, and then any of those markers. Because of this, we're going to ask that we get approval up to 22,000. This is a budgeted item, and it's within our budget amount.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments? If not, a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Riggs, you've got the next couple, please.
Yes, Mayor, this first one is an encroachment agreement, and it allows us to cross Georgia Power's transmission line in order to serve the new Kroger site.
Okay. Question, comments, or motions?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Next item, Gary.
Mayor, this is, we got a lump sum price of $14,275 to install the service line for Surya, and we'll be reimbursed that cost.
Okay. Any discussion on this item? And if there's none, a motion is in order.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Gary. Tommy Sanders, you're next, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This item is a purchase through GMA Lease Pool of an eight cubic yard dump truck, rear loader dump truck. It's the truck we use for our backdoor service. There's a picture of the actual truck we want to purchase. We received six bids, ranging from $84,982 to $91,950. Two of the bids met the specifications. Rush Trucking was the low bidder at $88,164.46, and Carolina Environmental Systems had a bid of $91,950. We are request, we'd normally, you know, award this to the low bidder, but we are requesting to purchase the truck from Carolina Environmental Systems for $91,950 because it is available immediately. That's a picture of the actual truck. The Rush Trucking would take 65 days for delivery, and we have, the reason we're making this purchase is we have had an engine failure in the, one of our trucks that we use for this service, so we need this truck as fast as we can get it. We looked at possibly renting, the cost of renting a truck between now and the 65 days, and it would be considerably more than the difference in price, the $4,000 difference in price, so we're recommending the Carolina Environmental Systems truck.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Tommy on this item?
Mayor, I do. Tommy, the truck 688 and the truck 630, are those the same truck that we're ordering? Are those?
Yes, those are our existing trucks that we use, and one of them, we use every day. 630 is what we're using every day. 688 was the backup to 630, and, you know, when we have a truck that needs service or, you know, sometimes we need, we need a backup, we need some redundancy to be able to serve those customers, and...
But let me answer, let me answer, ask the question another way. We've had a problem with both of these trucks. Is this the same truck that we're ordering? Is it just because the age of the two trucks, I guess?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
The 688's a 1997, so it's been used a long time, and...
So you're happy with it, it's just old, and that's...
That's correct.
Okay.
And these are small trucks, because far the backdoor service, we actually pull into the driveways, pull down or up the driveway to, and our operator gets out and gets the cart from the person's, you know, house or back door, so that's the reason. This is sort of a specialized truck, and...
And that's really nice, by the way. I've heard people comment on that. I mean, people appreciate it.
Yeah, we've got about 550 of our customers are backdoor customers, so it's a considerable, it's about 10% of our customers take advantage of this service.
And also in addition, Tommy, I talked to Bill Groshu, advisor, and he said that typically, commercial vendors only average about five years on their vehicles, so this one being 15 to, you know, 18 years old.
That was 18, and I think the backup you said in the work session is a 2001, so we have 15 years out of that, too.
That's correct.
Thank you, Mayor.
Anything else? If not, a motion.
Motion to purchase the truck from Carolina Environmental Systems for $91,000.
Okay. All, that one, it is purchased through the lease book, right?
That's correct. GMA lease book.
Okay, that doesn't change your motion.
No, it's not.
Does that change your second, does it?
It will.
You still second that?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tommy. Mr. Hassabrock, you've got the next one.
Honorable Mayor and Council, appreciate coming for you tonight, and we're bringing to you the, it's our Itron Meter and Software Maintenance and Support Contract. It's an annual contract that we have for our meter test equipment, and this is a sole source supplier that's specifically for our equipment, and we budget, this is a budgeted item each year, and the electric department is recommending that you, that you approve the invoice of $7,393.70.
Okay. Any discussion on this item? If not, a motion is in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Don, Mr. Jones.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, we're asking for your approval to retain services from Allen Smith Consulting. This is a firm that specializes in grants and grant administration for infrastructure replacement improvement projects, and specifically, we're looking to retain their services to hopefully get some grant funding to do some needed improvements in the Atco Village area. In this year's round of fire hydrant flow testing, the fire department flowed hydrants in this area, and in doing so, noticed a significant decrease in flow rates in almost all of the hydrants there. We have gone through and verified that valves are open, we have gone through and verified that hydrants are functioning, and it would appear that the loss of flow between, I believe it was 2011 and this year's testing, is a result of further deterioration of the water mains inside that area. A lot of these mains are original to the Mill Village. You know, the Mill showed up around 1900, the water infrastructure went in in pieces thereafter, but there's, there's some significantly aged infrastructure in there, and we are looking to find a funding source to replace that, and would ask your approval of this. Their total fee for doing the grant writing and the, what they call project readiness, which is the field work, and some of that is $8,000, would ask your approval.
Okay. Any discussion?
Mayor, I do. Are they clay pipes, old clay pipes?
These are cast iron pipes. That was the material of choice for that generation of water infrastructure, and it's unlined pipe, so what you typically see with unlined pipe is if you cut it and look at it in cross-section, over time, the pipe just grows together from what's called tuberculation, and it's just rust and accumulated deposits in the pipe. So you may have a six-inch pipe on the outside, but you cut it in half, and the pipe's this big on the inside, and that's, that's where your flow goes.
Well, you and I talked, Bob, you said, you know, we're about 80%, maybe 90% of those water lines are. How do you find with others, I mean, what is your technique for, with those old trees and streets?
There's, there are several ways. There are electronic means where you can directly hook to the pipe and induce a signal and trace that out. Unfortunately, one of the most effective ways is to just get a big yellow piece of equipment out there and dig a hole, and you hit it. And there could be some of that out there, just to be perfectly honest with you, but, you know, the electronic means of tracing these things down is pretty effective. We have some old drawings that we can go off of that suggest areas that are more likely to contain those pipes than others, and it honestly is a little bit of trial and error.
But that is a part of the grant writing, is, that is part of the grant writing to understand?
What we'll do is, we will take the best information that we have, and we will, we will identify an area, and then we'll also have to retain the services of an engineering firm, and they'll do a preliminary engineering report, and they will scope the project, and what we'll try to do is, we'll try to scope the project so that the amount of money that they anticipate we can get, the phase one project will complete that for that targeted amount of money, and, you know, if we're successful with this, then I anticipate at least a phase two, possibly three, depending on how the flows improve from the previous phases where we, we think two phases will get the flows back to where we need them. We'll have to make sure we see how far-reaching each of those phases are to be certain of that.
Good, thank you.
Any other discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Before we get to our finance report, there is one item to add to the agenda. Chair, I will ask for that item to be added.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item is added. Mr. Porter.
Yes, Mayor, this is for C.W. Matthews. We had to buy asphalt yesterday to pave the new park that where the old Dennis building was, the cost of $6,016.96, and I ask for their approval of that.
Okay, how many spaces were created by that?
16.
16, very good, looks nice out there. Chair will entertain a motion.
Make a...
Second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously now for the finance report. Mr. Reinhart, try not to shoot the messenger.
I'm a mayor and council. Tonight, we'll be looking at the fiscal year 2016, beginning with the July 2015, and comparing to July 2014. In the general fund, revenues increased over last year, last July, by about $2,000. Expenses increased by $5,000. This increase is due mainly to increased personnel expenses. Three years of revenue that I look at on a monthly basis, local option sales tax have a decrease of roughly $8,000. Police fines and forfeiture, we have a decrease of around $7,000, and billing permits and inspection fees have an increase of about $15,000. The Water and Sewer Fund, revenues increased over last July by $101,000. Expenses decreased by $13,000. This is due mainly to decreased operating expenses and decreased capital expenses. In the Gas Fund, revenues have decreased over last year by $65,000, while expenses have decreased by $422,000. This decrease is due to decreased cost of purchased gas and decreased capital expenses. In the Electric Fund, revenues increased over last year by $471,000. Expenses decreased by $98,000, and this is due to increased operating expenses and increased capital expenses, coupled with a large decrease in cost of purchased electricity. In the Stormwater Fund, revenues increased over last July by $3,000. Expenses increased by $16,000. This is due to increased personal expenses and increased operating expenses. In the Solid Waste Fund, revenues increased over last July by $3,000, and expenses increased by $22,000, and this is due mainly to increased operating expenses. And finally, in the Fiber Optics Fund, revenues increased over last July by $12,000, and expenses have decreased by $26,000, and this is due mainly to decreased operating expenses.
Okay. Any questions for Tom on the finance report? All right. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
And, is there anything... And is there anything else that needs to come before council this evening?
Yes, Sir Mayor and Council, we have several events that's going to be going on the next couple of weeks. This Sunday is Cartersville Parks Rec Department and Humberto County Parks Rec Department, along with Coosa River Basin Initiative. We are hosting the Etowah River Water Trail Rodeo that will, that will be launching from our new Leek Mounds launch and going paddling to U-Harley. After that, there'll be a dinner catered by Johnny Mitchell Smokehouse and some giveaways. Also, an event that's new to us that we're kind of, we're very excited about, Saturday, September the 26th, the Atlanta Track Club, along with Cartersville High School, will be hosting the Wingfoot Classic. That's a cross-country meet, and they, this past Monday, they had over 4,500 participants signed up for that. They have, there'll be our Sand Smith Park and our Etowah River Walk will be closed that morning for, for our, our citizens, but this, the first race will be an open community race, and then the next four races will be middle school and high school age kids, and that's all at Sand Smith Park.
I'm sorry, Gary, are those going to be five K's, or are they just going to be like a loop around, the 2.4 around?
No, it, it is a five K, and it is not on the, it is not on the Etowah River Walk Trail. It is through the fields and through the dales and all around Sand Smith Park, but it is 3.1 mile.
Okay.
For, that's the main course. I think the middle schoolers run a shorter, a shorter version of that. And then on Saturday, September the 26th, we have our youth fishing at Dillinger Park from, starting at 7:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon, and then the next day, Saturday, September the 27th, is our monthly moonlight hike. We'll be meeting at 6:45 and departing at 7:00.
Thank you, Greg.
Greg, question please.
Yes, sir.
The Canes, the baseball team?
Yes, sir.
Are they selected for All-Stars? I notice it's all Canes that's not from the...
Well, this was an All-Star team. This was, this, this, this ten and under group was chosen from our, from the, well, from major league and the, and the minor league teams from Cartersville Little League.
That's good. Okay. Okay. Thank you. Again, any other business that needs to come before council tonight?
Mayor, I'd like to say something about Roseline.
Go right ahead.
This weekend is the annual Roseline event. It's a juried art show. It is music. We showcase all the talent in this community and surrounding communities. It's a big event, and it's in my neighborhood, and we're just, the neighbors are tickled to have it, and it's all the good music, food, and art you would care to see for two days, so come out.
Kitty Day Parade on Saturday as well, so make sure you're...
Nine o'clock.
Planning your, planning your travels if you're heading down Main Street around nine o'clock on Saturday. Plan an alternate route for that, if you don't mind. Yes, sir.
And also tomorrow night is really for life at Dillinger Park. It starts at 6:00, so go to Dillinger Park after 4:00. Or you won't be able to...
What if you live in Wellington?
Or...
I guess you're just...
You walk home.
Yeah, I guess you walk home, don't you? Any other business before council tonight? Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn?
Send it.
I'll move.